I can hear you now.
Okay.
Are we kind of organized there in the schoolhouse?
We are organized, but I think we're waiting for one commissioner to arrive. And then I'm going to read an announcement.
Okay.
At the start of the meeting before it begins.
Yep.
So that's always my friend. And I can take Sarah. Email from Dan this today. I asked her a question and he said she has some. He called a BFF, best friend forever.
Yeah, I know. It's nice to be with you.
Yeah, literally.
It's nice to be alone.
I can see. So why don't we be going? I have an announcement to read for the benefit of the commission and the public before we actually start the meeting and allow the chair to call. The meeting to order. Just want to note, unfortunately Chair Golden is not able to attend in person tonight. He is under the weather with an illness. He has notified us that he will not be attending, that he will be attending remotely for just cause due to this illness. The town attorney Catherine Enberg has confirmed that Chair Golden may do so under the new Brown Act meeting provisions. AB two, four, four, nine, provided a quorum of the board is attends in person, which we have this evening. And given that I see we have three members here in person. Chair Golden may attend the meeting remotely and chair the meeting remotely. Chair Golden, as required by the Brown Act, which is a question for you. Could you please let us know if there is anyone eighteen years of age or older in the room with you? And if so, your relationship with them.
There is no one in the room with me.
Thank you very much. You are able to open the meeting and begin this meeting of the planning commission this evening.
Okay, well, let's bring the meeting to order. Could we do roll call, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Brothers.
Present.
Commissioner Krasinski.
Here.
Commissioner Koff seal. Not present. Chair Golden.
I'm here.
And Vice Chair Tark. We have a quorum of the commission this evening.
Okay, so let's get started. If something goes wrong, I've asked Nicholas to step in. You know, if we lose connection or something like that, but hopefully this will work. Let me know on your end if it's, if it's, if it's actually working. And I'm still pest testing positive for COVID, so I didn't want to infect anybody just before the holidays. So that's, that's why I'm hanging out here. But I'm doing fine. Anyway, it first thing on the agenda, of course, is open communications. Oral communications where members of the public can speak. On topics that are not on the agenda. So basically anything not associated with housing is what we're looking for now, if you have a statement. And if you could either come up to the podium in the schoolhouse or put your hands up online and we'll call on you. And we'll do the normal three minutes time.
And just to let everyone know, since we don't have a timer available online, I'll be keeping time with my watch here. Or phone, excuse me.
Well, this seems unusual. I see nobody in coming up to the platform and I see no hands up online.
There's one here. We have one, one person with their hand up in the audience.
Oh, okay. Well, please bring them up to the podium then.
I'm Bob. Your thoughts only for myself, not for other entities.
Is Bob speaking? If so, I cannot hear him.
He is speaking, yes.
This is, the mic is not on?
Sounds like it's on.
Testing.
Oh, that works. You're there.
And. I power cycled it. John, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay. Bob Tricott speaking only for myself, not on behalf of other residents or entities. Last week, our town council signaled a critical change in town policy. For years, our town leadership downplayed the severity of our wildfire hazards and the risks they posed. It refused to acknowledge the fire district's identification of significant impact that dense new development would have on public safety. It insisted that no mitigations whatsoever were needed to protect public safety. That week, that changed. In the fire safety work plan, the town of Portola Valley has acknowledged the concerns put forward by the fire district. And committed to concrete steps to address those concerns. It doesn't go nearly far enough, but it's an important step in the right direction. Residents should applaud and support council members who push this forward. Our new town council has also signaled an important change in the character of our governance. We're seeing a move away from the pattern of past leadership in which residents with different viewpoints had their motives impugned or were publicly disparaged. But culture changes slowly. As recently as last week, a member of an important committee spread complete fabrications in the public forum. About residents whose views they disagreed with. Then cited those fabrications as a basis for labeling those residents, quote, bad people. Is that the kind of culture we want? Where the town is divided into two camps, good people and bad people. Where the substance of an argument is ignored. Where are silenced with smears and unsubstantiated claims of, quote, misinformation. What gives me a sense of optimism is that reasonable people stepped forward and defended the rights of others to express differing viewpoints. Without necessarily endorsing those viewpoints. That's what we need more of. If you welcome the recent tentative turn towards safety, you should support the council in this move. If you want a culture in which differing opinions can be heard and explored, you should speak up in support of that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, I see. Nobody else in the schoolhouse, but I see Rita Comas with her hand up. Rita, if you could put her on, please. I'm not hearing Rita.
We're bringing her up.
Is it just me or is other, are people hearing Rita?
No, we're, we're trying to allow Rita to speak. We're still working on making that happen. I think she's, I think not open.
Yes, thank you for taking my comment. I wasn't going to comment in this, in this particular meeting at this time, but I do feel strongly. Last week, I had sent a message to our intern town attorney. About different committee members making disparaging comments about residents. On the PV forum and since we do not have an electronics. Communications policy yet. But last May, I did talk to the town publicly about. Comments that people are making on the PV forum in other ways. And I just hope that this town, when residents are being disparaged in any way. On the forum or other methods, but especially on the forum, which is a closed chat. Not a social media. But when committee members are doing that, but then those same residents. Are being presented with different issues in front of these committees, commissions. I think those people need to recuse themselves. On those particular topics. It's not just my personal opinion, but I feel very strongly about this and I don't know if our town attorney. Can comment on it because it does involve somebody on this particular commission. But I, I hope we, we, you know, that particular person recuses themselves. And, and other committees and commissions in our lovely town. Work on this and not just keep pushing it off on the town council meetings for. I'm not sure for what day, but for someday. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. I do not see any other hands up. So let's move on to the, the first and main item on the agenda tonight, which is the. Looking over the latest iteration of our housing element submittal. With the objective that. We, the planning commission, make an amendment and pass it along to the town council. So I believe we have a staff presentation. Is that you, John?
Chair Golden, members of the planning commission, we have Adrian Smith, who will be giving our presentation this evening. She's been working closely with. The former director and the consultants on the development of the housing element. So she'll be taking the lead on this this evening. I do want to note for the record as well that our commissioner Kofseel has arrived at the meeting.
Thanks, Adrian.
I, I do have one more thing to request of the commission before Adrian gives her presentation. We do have one commissioner that needs to step down. Related to a, the project at forty-three, eighty-eight and forty-three, ninety-four Alpine Road. So before the commission asks any questions regarding. That particular, those particular properties, we would allow the commissioner to step down to. Leave the room so that we can continue with those questions. So please hold any questions for those two properties until. Commissioner Targ has left the room.
Those, by those, that's the Willow Commons and the one next to it. Am I correct?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Adrian.
Thank you, Chair Golden, and good evening commissioners in the schoolhouse, members of the public. I've actually been working on the housing element since July twenty twenty-one. Usually I've been working behind the scenes, so. Today it's kind of exciting to be here in front of you and giving a presentation. So of course, we're here to talk about the latest iteration of the housing element. So we've made some updates according to comments from HCD that we received in July. And there are a few tweaks we've had to make to the general plan as well to accommodate those housing element updates. So we're going to review that this evening. And then if the commission is willing to do so, perhaps make a recommendation to council to approve the housing element. Here we are, just for a meeting purpose, review changes and then consider the formal action as I just mentioned. So just quickly, the meeting format, I'll do my presentation. We'll move to planning commission questions of staff, followed by public comment. And then we'll go to planning commission discussion and consideration. And of course, we'll be doing a bit of segmenting as mentioned by John as well. You've seen this table a million times, but it's always good to remind ourselves of how far we've come in this process. So now we are up to about forty-five public meetings that concern the housing element and around a hundred and forty-six hours of combined, those combined public meetings. So first I just wanted to go over, this is outlined in your staff report, but just to update you on what's sort of happening. Simultaneously as, as you're reviewing the housing element tonight. At our most recent meeting with our HCD reviewer, and that was on November twenty ninth. She brought to us the opportunity to submit the housing element for a preliminary review. So that's not an official submission and official review where they have sixty days. But rather what she wanted to do was offer us the opportunity to take a look at it, make sure we're substantially on track. And that pending planning commission review, pending town council review and adoption. That we will be able to submit to HCD for certification. So it's just a preliminary work, opportunity for them to actually front end some of their work. Because if they weren't going to do this process for us, we'd get swept up in the very large queue of other jurisdictions that are going to be submitting in January. And then we would have to wait for the full sixty day review period. So we're hoping this is going to help us. The, so we went ahead, this, again, this was on the twenty ninth when we met with our reviewer. She just came out with it. We didn't know this was available to us. We agreed it would be advantageous. She did say it was a limited offer and we had to submit. By the end of that week, so we literally had, I think, maybe two business days and less to get everything together and of course post for the public as well. So that was on the first of December. We were hoping that we would get. Preliminary review letter from our reviewer for tonight's meeting, but we weren't lucky enough to get that. It should be forthcoming. We should be able to see it prior to town council meeting on the housing element in January. So we're looking out for that. Due to that accelerated timeline of submitting to HCD in such short order, there are some errors in the housing element. We have had a number of them brought to our attention. Some are just minor and typographical and we'll work on those. And if any others do come in, please do send them to us and members of the public as well. You can send those to the housing email address. We appreciate that. Okay. So just briefly to touch on the changes that we've made to the housing element, since you've last seen it. They're all targeted updates that are specifically responsive to the HCD comment letter. So we're just going to go over the, the sort of notable changes. So number one, the first thing we did was work on some. Increasing some, some certainty into the timing and availability of our pipeline projects. Our reviewer was very firm on this. She wanted assurance that these pipeline projects are in fact going to be developed. And so she did push us on being specific about certain things. And so she asked us to insert a new program to address that concern. Number two, the opt-in diversification program is now a pilot program. Before we didn't have it as a pilot. And the problem there was that we couldn't end the program. It would violate fair housing law. And so we were told if you make it a pilot, you can actually decide to. End the pilot program. So once we can do that, once we've reached our maximum number of twelve units reached. It's now been re-categorized as an affirmatively furthering fair housing program AFFH. And the reason it's appropriate to be in AFFH is because the opt-in program allows for the dispersment of units throughout the town. And that was something that appealed to our reviewer. She actually liked the program and thought it should remain. She just wanted us to reclassify it. And of course. We can't count it in arena. But if we do get units through this program, we are going to be able to count it as unit production. So when we do our annual reporting to HCD, we would report often units and that would count towards our overall housing production. And number three, the zoning density for multifamily requires a minimum of twenty dwelling units per acre and we have to provide a range. And so we negotiated with the reviewer on this. We were trying to be conservative. So we proposed to her house, you know, twenty to twenty-three and she agreed with us on that. And the reason why we had to do this minimum of twenty and then offer a range is because our rezoning wasn't in place at the start of, of the planning period. That was January thirty-first of this year. So we had to do this. Number four, the reviewer required us to make some tweaks to the town's existing EDU programs. And basically that's just. If we face a situation where we have a shortfall in anticipated EDU units, we have to review our strategy. And/or identify additional sites to accommodate that shortfall. So she's just sort of. She's kind of encouraging us to have a little bit more scrutiny over our production and that we have a plan if it doesn't come together as we expect. Number five is minor changes to the Dorothy Ford Field and Open Space Site Program. And that's to clarify timing of certain program steps. And she was very insistent upon this, that we needed to be a little bit more clear on that. And again, it's sort of a common theme from our discussions with her that we have to bring more certainty to the process and how are we as a town. Providing that certainty, whether it's pipeline projects or other planned projects of housing sites. So number six is all of these, you know, tweaks that we've made has caused a little bit of a shift in arena numbers. So that's changed our previous total unit potential and our percent of buffer as well. And those are owing to the modification of the Willow Commons Pipeline Project, which is under construction. That project now is going to be two units less than before. Then there's the reclassification of four, three, nine, four Alpine Road Housing Site from multifamily to mixed use. So it's a lower anticipated unit production now. And then removal, of course, of the opt-in program from arena. And fortunately, the reviewer was willing to allow us to offset that change by adding ten additional above moderate EDUs. Just to, to mention it, we did ask if we could have more. Did see if there was an opportunity, since she was willing to let us take those, to add those ten units, if there was any more wiggle room. But she said, you know, based on our, we have to be able to substantiate that. Based on past unit production in town and we just wouldn't have the numbers behind us to. You know, to add any more ADUs. So next, just the conforming amendments that we're making to the general plan. There's a couple of changes to the comprehensive plan map that we need to make. So four, three, eighty, that's the Willow Commons project is changing from local shopping and services to mixed use, three to six dwellings per acre. There is an error in the map. It should show mixed use, not local shopping and service. So we will make sure we deal with that. Prior to town council adopting. And then four, three, nine, four Alpine Road from multifamily that was previous to mixed use. And then you'll see that there's sort of an orphan designation that's hanging out on the map. Multifamily medium, three to twenty, that no longer has a parcel that it's associated with. So we'll get rid of that. And then we've also updated the Nowthor's Triangle Area Plan Map. Again, this is consistency with the changes made above. So. We're changing the designations for four, three, eighty and four, three, nine, four. Again, we have another labeling error and this was due to the. Quick turnaround time that we submitted to HCD. So we did miss a few things and we'll get that fixed up. And then our land use element as well, we just changed that dwelling unit per acre range to twenty to twenty-three. We also revised dwelling units for three to six for mixed use. And we changed the actual text. That it's no more than, so to make up for that range, the twenty to twenty-three units, so no more than twenty-three dwellings per acre. So that's just for clarity. Just briefly to review consequences of not adopting prior to next January, the thirty-first. So if the town does adopt and submit to HCD, HCD can certify prior to January thirty-first. And the town can keep its required rezonings as programs as they currently are in the housing element. So this means the town does have some more time. And again, this idea of the interim review that's being done by HCD right now is part and parcel of this process because the idea is. Hopefully if town council decides to adopt at the beginning of January, we can turn it right around, get it into HCD. And our reviewer said something in the neighborhood of maybe two to three weeks-ish, she would complete her review. This is all ideally, of course. Well, we only have so much under our control, but that's the idea that, that we're anticipating. So after that cutoff though, HCD can't certify our housing element unless our rezonings are complete. And as I mentioned previously, the town will get caught up in the queue with the rest of the jurisdictions and I'm pretty sure it'll take probably up to sixty, which is their ability, you know. Of sixty days to review and we'll just have to wait that out. So what happens if that takes place and we're caught up in the queue, we're waiting for sixty days for them to respond. We will continue to be vulnerable to builder's remedy as we have been. Our interim planning director is departing in February. Right now he's up to speed and totally engrossed in everything that we're doing. Once he's not here, we're going to have to bring the next director up to speed and you know, that'll take some time. There's a potential of civil lawsuits potentially brought by housing advocates. There's the attorney general and HCD, they did establish enforcement divisions for this cycle. This is all brand new. And we could be, we've talked about this before, so it's, it's just a reminder of potential fines, loss of local control. The imposition of minimum densities. And then. We are already one year into our eight-year cycle. So we have seven years left and we have a lot of work to do, a lot of programs, and we really do need to get to the work of, of implementing our housing element as well. So upcoming meetings, we are going to take this to town council in January, on January tenth, and hopefully things will go smoothly. They're going to review your recommendation, housing element and the general plan amendments, just like tonight. And then ideally. While we've submitted to HCD, we get working on the actual zoning code amendments and we bring that to you. We'll go through that process and then of course, town council will look at that as well. And a reminder that planning commission did do a fair amount of work on zoning code amendments. Last year, until we decided to kind of put the break and segment the review. So it's not going to be brand new and we're hopeful. We'll be able to jump right back in and we'll get through it in a good amount of time. So that's it. Again, typos and clerical errors, we'd really appreciate if anybody sees anything to send it our way and we'll get that cleaned up. So thank you and we welcome any questions.
Okay, so and I guess we will not do questions yet on. Jim White's properties of Willow Commons and the property next door by Robert. So if our commissioners could. Limit, limit questions to that until a little bit later, but in the meantime. Jump right in. I won't call on you individually. I'll let you speak up.
Chair Golden, I would just also like to let the commissioners know that we do have our consultants, Curtis Banks and Carla Violet here to assist us in answering any questions that the commissioners have.
Perfect. Go for it, gang.
I have a few questions. Um, on the numbers, can you just help me with our last revision? Since then, we went down two on Willow Commons. I think we went down twelve on the opt-in. Then you said the reviewer would let us have more ADUs. So I think that's a plus ten. But there's also a big minus on the, is it forty-three, ninety-four, the site next to the Willow Commons. That went down, right? So it seems like we're kind of a lot negative compared to. The revision we last saw.
That's correct. And we did want to make sure that our reviewer looked at it before we took it any further. So she had seen all of these numbers and we actually provided. Our lot, we did a side-by-side comparison so she could see. We wanted to be really transparent about that and. Based on our last conversation with her, she indicated that, yep, that, that should be okay. That looks all right.
I see. So basically HCD is going to accept, let me call it a lower buffer, maybe if, if you're reading of the conversations correctly.
Okay, yeah, that's our understanding.
And then, you know, staff issues are top on our mind. I just wondered. You said the interim planning director, John's going to leave in February. Is that a, just a contract? Could it be extended or? There's not a way to keep somebody?
Although I'm having a lot of fun in Portola Valley and enjoying, enjoying everyone. And welcome your, your hospitality. I do have a limit on the number of hours that I can work because of my retirement plan, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, though.
Adrian, the informal review that you expected to receive today and did not, do you have any idea when you might get that? That seems very helpful in getting ready for the council meeting.
Right. We did actually try to nudge our reviewer a couple of times by this week, a couple of emails saying. We really appreciate it if, you know, because we really did want to get it here back from her in time for this meeting. That would have been really valuable to hear from her. So I'll try again. Yeah, I'll try again on, you know, and just get, just to get an idea, it would be helpful to sort of manage our expectations.
It sounds like you've been helpful. I have some questions on the staff memo, not necessarily on your presentation. Is that appropriate? Is this the appropriate time to ask those questions? One of my questions was, was Anne's. I knew, I didn't figure out the numbers, but I understand that now. My second question was the statement. I happened to print it out from page sixty of the number four draft. I happened to print it out from page sixty of the number four draft on public review, but I think it's also in the cover memo that has to do with SEQA. First, there's the question of you've made a finding that none of the changes being made in number four are are significant and therefore or or do they represent changed circumstances or a variety of other tests? And therefore we don't have to do any other environmental review. My question is, because I've never been in this situation, any of my clients never got four bites of the apple. Do you have to make a notice of determination that you have made that conclusion? In here, at one point, I found a layout of the criteria, no change circumstances, no substantial impact, but the question is something like a notice of determination to clarify that you have done an updated SEQA review for housing element number four.
What'd you say? I believe that the notice of determination would have been filed when the initial initial study and mitigated negative declaration was adopted. And I don't believe that given that we didn't do any further environmental analysis, other than to make this finding that another notice of determination is is triggered.
Is there some other element under SEQA that would just, you know, formalize that you thought about it for housing element four? And concluded that nothing further needed. Maybe I used the wrong term in using the NOD, but at least a file memo. It's in here in one sentence.
We do have on in our records, a report from our housing consultant that addresses the SEQA issue.
Okay. Then the other question I had under SEQA is a little more substantive. I'm reading from page sixty of the draft number four. While Portola Valley complies with this requirement, it refers to a thirty-day requirement, it does not issue a formal determination of SEQA exemption within thirty days of an application being complete. I'm reading that to say that for certain projects, you might make a determination and not not issue a public statement under SEQA. And Laura, at one point, went over every one of the possible housing elements and and I understood her to say that there would be a determination if no SEQA review was required or of whatever SEQA review, including non-review, would be required. So my question is, is that just something Laura said? Did I misunderstand it? Or am I misreading page sixty here? I can read the larger part of it, but.
Is that red page?
Yes. Well, it's draft number four. It says lead agency determines housing development is exempt within thirty days of receiving a complete application. This project is deemed exempt. This triggers a sixty-day approval requirement. And Portola Valley complies with this, but does not issue a formal determination. Therefore, how is public going to know when you've made that determination that a project is exempt?
Is this a, is this in the housing element itself? Okay.
It's page sixty of draft number four, discussion of public review. Sorry, Nicholas, I'm I have to print out copies of some things rather than look for them on my computer.
You said it was, can you repeat the page number again first?
What I'm looking at here is page number sixty of draft number four in the section called environmental review. Page sixty-two.
It's the red text on, it's the written page sixty-two, the PDF page number is eighty.
This is of the housing element, not our agenda.
Yes.
John, may I? John Vicks, I think I can help with that response if you would like.
Sure. This is Curtis Banks?
Yes.
Yes, that would be helpful, Curtis. Thank you. This is Curtis Banks, our consultant will be helping respond to that.
So this was just in response again to some of the changes in state law. So the we were asked to put in what our process has been in Portola Valley. And then there is a corresponding program in the housing element that states in compliance with state law that the town will make sure they're issuing those exemptions within the thirty-day period. So this was explaining what on the page you cited was explaining what happened from time to time in the past. And then that program looks at modifying the town's SEQA guidelines. So it's clear that that notice needs to be filed within the specified time period.
So historically, we we didn't necessarily do it and now we're committing to actually do it all the time?
Correct. It did not always occur. But the town is committing and actually there have been changes to state law that require that.
Well, if you could change this language to say, well, Portola Valley complies with this requirement is it has not always issued a formal determination. It will now do so, or words to that effect. Because as it reads reads now, it's not consistent with what I understand you to say. And I think it's really important that we're very open and transparent about anything we do. So I see this as a substantive issue.
Yeah, making that clarification should not be a problem.
Yeah, okay. And the changes to the SEQA rules are did I say a source, but that hasn't happened yet, hasn't started yet. So this is a good way to at least make one tweak. I had another series of questions, Adrian, and it's an issue that I'm almost not even able to answer, ask the questions because it's sort of beyond my comprehensive knowledge. But it looks to me like what this housing element four does is a lot of cutting back on the role of the ASCC and in particular, there's reference to a place where we make, we're going to have to, we're going to be in the process of making some objective development rules. And I just wish somebody would explain that to be in language I could understand. I found pieces of it and I didn't just find one area and I may have missed it where it was directly addressed directly. I'll editorialize and say, I think the ASCC is one of our one of our diamonds, not even in the rough, and I hate to see any of its activities cut back. So that's where my question's coming from. It appears that their role is being undermined, for lack of a better word.
I can try and address the question. I believe that what the housing element, the housing element version four reflects is the state's direction that the town not have implements or impediments to the production of affordable housing. So it has going towards more objective standards rather than just the than allowing it, a group like the ASCC to exercise discretion when they're reviewing the project. So I believe that all of the references that you see in the document go to a movement towards making our standards more objective and less discretionary when it comes to reviewing housing projects. Curtis, did you want to add anything else to that?
Yes, I don't believe we've made any substantive changes to those. I think all along through this process, there has been policies and statements regarding objective standards that is currently part of the state law, changes that were passed a number of years ago, and the town is currently working on developing those standards. So what we have is consistent with what you have seen in the past.
Thought I saw some changes in the red line, but I'm not as facile with the computer and I'm and I'm not.
Yeah, there may have been, there are some tweaks to the language. But there has always been the statement that objective design standards are required. And that again is per state law that was passed several years ago.
But those will still be applied by the ASCC?
There's different processes. I I need to look at what policy you're referring to specifically.
Check this program one dot one C. And the table of changes is red page twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what was being said.
I suspect it's on red page twenty-seven. A four dot one.
Yeah, thank you, Nicholas. That's what I had from the matrix chart, A four dot one, A dot four dot one. I thought it said no review by the ASCC. Instead, we would apply objective development standards. And who would apply those standards and when will they be made? It raises a lot of questions.
I think that would be, you know, that's something that will have to be developed. I that policy is referring to that for the affiliated housing program, the town will use the objective design standards. And it'll be up to the town's process. It doesn't preclude the AAC, but whoever is the approving authority will need to use the objective design standards in reviewing the project. That's the intent of this policy.
Can we clarify that language to make it clear that at least for now that resides at the ASCC and that you're not moving it?
Well, if you look at the top portion of that, it talks about the ASCC and it has, it talks about the existing program to create the design standards that will then be used for the decision-making criteria text will be added to the ASCC review process. Clarifying that the ASCC will review multifamily developments to determine they're consistent with the objective design standards. And this goes on to say that will also apply to the affiliated housing programs. So it's not really changing your process for review. It is just making it clear that it is part of the process for review of affiliated housing projects that you will utilize the objective standards.
So it's not reducing the number of projects that go in front of the ASCC. It's giving them some standards that they will be required to abide by.
I understand. Thank you.
Just building on that, I'm not aware that there's a affirmative legal obligation. You are dealing with a multifamily structure that's not an affordable structure that you would need to go through and use design standards. That may be something that we elect to do, may be appropriate to do. And we previously stated that it is an appropriate thing to do for multifamily. What we've done here is we've added affiliated housing program. And then we've also included the affiliated housing program among others. And I found the among others to be confusing. I was wondering if, again, I'm on red page twenty-seven. First paragraph in the program one dot. So I wasn't sure what we meant by among the parenthetical, among others. Or is that simply identifying that there are other cases in which objective design standards would be would apply as a matter of law already? Or what were you doing here?
So for example, the opt-in program is going to have certain objective standards attached to it. We haven't developed them yet, but that could be, that could fall within the category of among others.
So another way of saying it is would be used for affiliated housing programs among other program, among other entitlement pathways that use objective design standards.
Yeah.
And just, I just want to make sure that we aren't creating a kind of a curse that we're going to fill up.
Nicholas, if you could get a little closer to the mic when you're speaking, that would be helpful.
Well, I've got the mic. We're now using a range and I understand why we might do that. I'm looking for a little clarification. One of the aspects of using a range is it creates a presumably a lower boundary as well as an upper boundary. So for example, if I have a range of twenty to thirty and I decided I want to do a match housing, I might end up with a fifteen dwelling per acre. I wouldn't be able to do that because I know the lower boundary. Is that right?
So that would most likely be a situation that would trigger no net loss. So because the project only generates fifteen, well, if it enters the range, is twenty to thirty, that would likely be a situation where the town would need to look for a potential area to upzone or to basically account for those additional five units that were not, that are short of the range.
But that's the reason why it would happen. So it'd have a lower boundary so it can establish a
Well, it would be the town's obligation to fill that gap of the five units that are under the
zone that says I'm twenty, I'd be, am I allowed to build a fifteen D U A product there?
Well, not if there's a range. Right. And before, how our housing was written was the minimum was the maximum and you can't have that. You have to have because we said up to twenty units. And they which would mean we could do fifteen and that's, and then our reviewer said, no, it's got to be a range and the minimum has to be twenty. And then
Why do I, does my minimum have to be twenty? I know that my twenty is my safe harbor for multifamily. But that's just the safe harbor. So if I want to do a a less dense product, then I may be compelled to do a particular housing type. And I would be limiting myself. So I'm trying to say that I'd want to be able to do a fifteen D U A, a twenty-three D U A to allow me to do a range of is there, do we see that there's an issue?
Of having a lower minimum on the range. We're compelled to have a minimum of twenty units. For certain sites that are intended to generate low-income units. Our housing, you know, state housing law and our reviewer has noted that if one makes the assumption that a site will generate, say, low uh if one makes it the assumption that a site will generate, say, low income units, uh the minimum density needs to be twenty units to the acre.
That's the safe harbor.
That's the safe harbor. Yeah. So I'm apologies if I'm but it it's only a legal obligation if if we need those low income units in our satisfy arena. Is that am I answering your question?
Sort of. And that is to say, that is to say, I hear what you're saying and I guess it is true. But yeah, I agree. Uh but I think that you clarified the issue.
Can I jump in with a related question? Uh what in our previous submission, the draft three wasn't the range three to twenty? And then the
Correct.
The the I guess in the July response letter, the they indicated that that was not acceptable to have.
Correct. Yes, because those sites that were um uh targeted for three to twenty were also at same time assuming that they were going to generate low income units. And our reviewer and state law says that in order to make that assumption, you need to have a minimum density of twenty minutes. And a range. That's the that's where the twenty thirty comes from.
So the earlier version did not comply with the law with the number three, basically. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Can you drop?
Right. Correct. Uh Curtis, looks like he wants to add something to that to this conversation.
Yeah, the requirement for the minimum twenty units is one of the implications of not having a certified housing element after um before January of this year. Jurisdictions that did not have a a certified housing element for to have that safe harbor for below market rate units. It has it can no longer be within a range. Previously, you could have a range that included the twenty units per acre, but you could have a little less. And then it could be fifteen to twenty five or something as long as you could show twenty was like at least twenty units would be to per acre is likely to occur. But because the town did not meet that requirement, state law states that now the minimum needs to be twenty units per acre.
Again, I I hear what you're saying.
So is this an item you want to bring back to discussion? Now that now that you you've now that you've heard the answer that you don't like, do we need to just put it into discussion? Yeah, we'd have to go through public stuff first. Exactly. Yes. Yeah, I I would go through the rest of the questions and then we got to separate out too. So do you have other questions, Nicholas?
They've got nothing more.
Okay.
All right.
Who else?
I have a few.
Go for it.
So I okay, I I guess could you clarify just a little bit more about the process and the importance of the January thirty first date? And I mean, the process in terms of we're going to adopt and submit. But then when do we certify and are we going to self-certify uh like last time and and then if, yeah, could you clarify that, please?
So in the past, the idea of self-certification was considered a best practice to help protect jurisdictions from builder's remedy for that time period that they had not yet been certified. Um since since we self-certified the last time, it's no longer um generally accepted thinking that it helps anybody. And so we haven't opted to do a self-certification this time around. Um so that's not part of your consideration um this time. So in terms of the timing itself, the idea, yes, is that ideally, if if town council decides to adopt on January tenth, we would literally turn it around and submit it to HCD the next day kind of deal. And then our reviewer had said to us, you know, I should be able to turn around my review in two, three weeks, which would be prior to the end of the month, which is the statutory deadline uh that we have in front of us and um it would be certified. We would reach certification before the deadline. And then we would still have time to do our rezonings and and our zoning code amendments and, you know, get everything done. And so if we miss submitting to HCD, say, we even submit to HCD on the twenty ninth, they're not going to have enough time. They're not going to have a couple of weeks to do their review and certify. So the idea really is to get it in by mid-month, you know, latest in a perfect world um to give HCD a reasonable couple of weeks to do the certification.
And so what happens if we submit in mid-January? But HCD doesn't come back until beginning of February and then we certify in the beginning of February. What what's the difference if we certify before or after January thirty first?
The HCD wouldn't certify if it's beyond the January thirty first date because the second you tip past January thirty first, you're required to have your rezonings in place. So HCD, what they do in theory is they would issue a letter on February second and say, we can't find you to be substantially in compliance with state law because you haven't done your rezonings yet, so we can't certify you. They could say something to the effect of you were substantially in conformance conformance otherwise and pending your rezonings and we will be able to certify you, but not now.
Okay. Um and then I have a question about program four dash one um and parking requirements. So program four dash one involves multifamily development and it says new parking requirements will not act as a potential constraint to new development. Um and that was part of the red text that was added. So how exactly do I interpret that? Are we not going to be able to require any parking or what type of parking requirements would we be able to have?
So we will be providing um parking standards for multifamily. That's going to be in the zoning code amendments that you'll be seeing shortly. Um and those are standard ranges based on bedroom numbers. Um and it would also include, you know, minimum number of guest parking spaces, that kind of thing. So we will have some standards certainly um for multifamily. The distinction that we're making is that we will have to conform with uh state density bonus law, which could mean an a developer would get a break on parking requirements depending on what they're proposing to put forth in their project. Um and if it's a hundred percent supportive housing project, they don't require any parking. So we are preempted by state law in a couple of different circumstances there. There's nothing we can do about it. I would say that you know, a discerning developer probably wouldn't want to put forth a project with zero parking because they're probably not going to have enthusiastic residents live there if they can't park their car. Um so I can't really, you know, this is in theory, but um I can't and I I couldn't. I wouldn't anticipate a project that that has zero parking. It's possible and we and I go, you know, again, state law says it's possible. Um but any any projects that don't fall under that state density bonus law or aren't a hundred percent supportive will have parking requirements absolutely, and we will be providing those minimum standards.
Well, and I guess the the state bonus density law is already there. I mean, we're not cha- changing anything about that, right? I guess by the red text that was added, are we are we just sort of saying we're going to follow state law or are we giving up any of our rights in in the parking that we're able to?
Yeah, it it's funny you say that because if state law is state law, we ha- we have to comply. Um but at different points, our reviewer did want to state us to state that we understood that and that we would follow state law. You know, just for extra certainty and to just put it really plainly, I suppose.
Okay, thank you. Um one one more question. Um so the the opt-in uh pilot program now. Um so it's no longer contributing to our sites inventory. Um and I guess it's, you know, it's been a program that's been pretty controversial and I think will take a lot of work to implement. And so I guess I understand that it's supporting affirmatively furthering fair housing, but like how how important is it that we actually keep it in the housing?
Our our thinking at this time is it wouldn't be prudent to remove a program like opt-in um because we're so far into the process with our reviewer. She's actually quite keen on the program and thinks it's creative and a good contributor to AFFH, as you pointed out. Um she and she helped us sort of craft it so that it would still be um, you know, legal before we we wanted to just end the program and we we reached our maximum number of units and that that's not allowed. Um so then she said, you know, let's make it a pilot program and helped us kind of work the program so we could still use it. I agree that it's going to take some doing, you know, it's a pretty involved program. Um but I I think it's worthwhile to keep just again, because it helps us with AFFH. And any additional units we generate from the program will will go towards our production number and we'll report that to HCD on a annual basis.
Okay, thank you. That's my questions.
Thank you.
Government code section sixty five fifty eight, point two C three provides either for a presumptive twenty units or provide analysis demonstrating the appropriate zone densities of the site identified to accommodate the lower unit. So the concern that I have here is where this comes up is in the Ladera Church. And I don't know that you can accommodate a twenty D U A on that site. But I look at that and I can do twenty D U A all day on a work field if but I don't know that I can do twenty D U A at all on um but that's the nature of my concern. So it may be that that's too hard to think about that. With that later to make a modification for the council to do it. But I don't think that we are stuck with a twenty D U A or
No net loss law would kick in, right? If for some reason we couldn't build out the project, um it would be incumbent upon the town to find a new site and somehow find those units, which is its own big challenge.
I know how to do that.
So you're concerned about the viability of that assumption? Right.
Why isn't it viable?
Nicholas, you're fading again. If you could.
I think I remember you have to go up to two right? In in that location. Or you would or else you'd have to have really skinny or really small tiny units. So I don't know. I don't know.
I guess one other thing I would just add is um this is for the Ladera Church site. This um this isn't a topic that hasn't changed in terms of the the housing element that was approved by council last spring assumed ten ten total units for that site. Um and that number has not changed in this iteration. So
The zoning minimum change, but not the target units.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, a lot of this is projection into areas of the future that we cannot necessarily predict. But yeah, I guess, you know, table six dash.
Yeah, I I think it might be possible relying on density bonus regulation to it regulations to achieve this density on the site, especially if they don't increase the number of density or the number of units on the site, but just take advantage of exceptions. So they get an extra floor area where they could build the housing units or they get a reduction in the setback requirement. They could possibly, I don't know if the numbers depend so hot, but they could build parking that's underground, which would give them more surface area of that. But depending on, you know, it it'll be dependent on the developer, like I can say. So I've I've lost Nicholas here. Are we moving into discussion of this item? It sounds a little bit, yes. So let's let's do more questions and then we'll I'll be sure to come back with you, Nicholas, although your mic is is terrible. Um everybody else's is good.
I think you have the microphone that you have to press the button.
Oh, well, it's not on. Well, I mean, there you go. You gotta press.
That's a whole lot better.
Better press the button.
Oh, well, yeah, well, let's see. Wait, but Roddy, did did you still have questions? No, Linda's got one and I and I don't know. Let go for it, Linda.
Yeah, um I know that I know that what we're trying to do here is get this approved by HCD. Um and I'm I looked uh back at one of the sections that's unchanged uh called Wildlife Hazards. It's page uh seventy nine and draft number four. It doesn't have a red number on it. Um and it it's about the talks about wildfire wildfire. And I'm just wondering, that's why this is a question. Uh the council did a adopt a major um set of measures and so forth between number three and here number four. And I wonder if it's worth of at least a sentence or two in there uh referencing that changes that were made by the council. I know this is something HCD hasn't paid any attention to, but it is a change in our background situation. And I don't know if it causes more trouble than it's worth, but uh seems important to me. And we got a public comment on the whole topic of fire safety. And uh I don't think the action by the council changes any of the maps. I I looked at that carefully, but it changes our policy.
So so Linda, let's come back. So so I think you're again moving into discussion. It's like, should we make a change there or not? Um I'd like to, unless there's a yes, I don't think there's a yes or no to your question right there. So let's come back on discussion. Do we have other just questions for for our uh our our staff and and consultants?
Can I just ask, what what's the sequence here in terms of questions about forty three ninety four? Are we going to have public?
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, sorry. Yeah, no, we have to have um a couple of folks leave the room, I think, to have questions on those. Thank you for reminding me.
I I'm just asking, are we going to do public comment? How how has public comment can be sequenced?
I would recommend that if if there are no other questions and commissioners have questions regarding forty three eighty eight and forty three ninety four Alpine Road, that we take this as an opportunity to while Commissioner Targ to move the room and then we can continue on with commission questions as well.
Respectfully, could I suggest that we resolve these issues and then to have discussion or questions of staff regarding those properties and then uh and then go and take public comment. So I don't end up going back and forth.
So I think that would probably be work fine. Uh Chair, if I am understanding the the suggestion, we could move, um if there are no other clarifying questions, we can move into public comment now. And then when it comes back to the commission for discussion, at that point, um Commissioner Targ could leave and we can have the discussion and any any other questions from from you uh regarding those two sites. Um once that's complete, Commissioner Targ will be invited back in and we could address all the other discussion points.
But would we do public comments on forty three eighty eight and forty?
Oh, I'm sorry.
One set of.
It's okay. Yeah, Commissioner Targ can hear all the public comments. That's not a problem.
So we could have Nicholas go out. Um then we ask clarifying questions of the two sites. Then have the public, if they have questions on those two sites, ask them while Nicholas is out of the room. Then Nicholas comes back, then the public asks the remaining comments.
I was suggesting a simpler process, actually, um which is really to just unless there are any burning questions for staff right now, let's just we could just go ahead with public. I was suggesting a simpler process, actually, um, which is really to just unless there are any burning questions for staff right now, let's just, we could just go ahead with public comment. Public can comment on anything, including those two sites. It's fine for Commissioner Targ to hear those comments. Um, but at that once public comment is closed, then at that point, um, we could segment the two discussions. And so then the commissioner only needs to leave the house once.
Is there any issue that then the public doesn't hear our questions before having a chance to comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. If 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 you do have burning clarifying questions now, then I guess.
Let me just step away from this and not create any more issues. I'll be back.
Don't go too far, though. I kind of think there might not be much.
Okay. So Ronnie, I I guess you have a question on those two properties.
Yeah. So well, first, um, Jim White, the owner of forty three ninety four and forty thirty. Uh, submitted a a public comment letter and has some suggested changes to a couple paragraphs that. Were basically there originally in our last submission, but were deleted in the current draft number four. And. Does staff see any issue with, uh, taking the changes that Jim recommended?
We we are comfortable with leaving the paragraphs in the housing element, taking out the the strike throughs. Uh, we don't believe that it makes a lot of sense having those, um, those those paragraphs here, but we don't see any issue. Uh, at least at the staff level with retaining them, but it could be that our. Our reviewer HCD does have some questions or some concerns because.
So maybe I could ask, why were they deleted?
They were deleted because it refers to multifamily designations. Uh, it also. Let me see. It it just didn't make a lot of sense to have this, these two paragraphs in place in the housing element in response to the changes we made to the. Designation for forty three ninety four Alpine Road. Okay. It just didn't didn't flow. It wasn't a. It wasn't a a good link between that designation and and what is relayed in these two paragraphs. But again. Do you like to recommend to the council that they be retained? You can certainly do that.
And there was a slight change to the numbers in in the letter that, uh, was submitted. I think was the only change.
Yeah, that that is a little more problematic. I I think changing the the designation to the three to twenty was a concern that HCD has, as you've heard that there is a. An issue with the production. Is that what you're?
That's not what I meant. Okay, just in the, um, for those those specific two paragraphs that the public comment letter referenced.
Oh, the the change from the four to the two.
Yeah. Yeah. And so now I do have it in front of me. Um, so I'm referencing the public comment letter. Has suggestions for those basically restoring those two paragraphs. Yeah, I do now see that it says multifamily. Does that mean? That that word would need to change to mixed use? Since that. Is the.
Yeah, that's if you wanted to keep those paragraphs, that would what is what we would recommend that, um, multi-family be stricken and mixed use inserted in its place.
Okay. And then I think his suggestion was, I think, along with. The the lower number of. Range for the zoning of the mixed use. And now now that is three to six, I think he was suggesting to change. This comment about four units down to two, two.
Yeah, and and I think this one, um, also, uh, I think it was was stricken because it refers to some market rates. Units may be permitted, but under the, um, change to the mixed use zoning, um, actually, all of the units there are assumed to. Be produced at market rate, essentially at above moderate. Uh, income levels. Uh, of course. The town would welcome the the lower income units be developed, but we couldn't make that assumption without going to that minimum twenty acre. Twenty units, the acre zoning. So that's why the the units were shifted over to the above moderate category. So then this, um, discussion refers to, yes, well, you know, some market rate. Units, um, and or non-supportive units may be permitted to cross subsidize. Uh, but if you hear, actually, we're assuming all of them will be. Market rate. But if that, all that said, um, at at a staff level, we've looked at this and I don't, and I don't think we have, um, any, you know. Major concerns with with keeping the language. You know, a reviewer, if I have, might might wonder why it's it's needed here, uh, given the change to the mixed use zoning.
Okay. Okay. And then I have one other question about it, uh, which is a little bit detailed to share with me. Um, so the the zoning on forty three ninety four, which is the vacant site. Changed from multifamily three to three to twenty, um, minimum three, maximum twenty. Uh, to mixed use, uh, three to six range. And that site also is described in the housing element on page one seventeen as a supportive housing overlay. Which says that a shared housing facility, which I think is one of the possible developments on that site. Like, for example, multiple living units with a shared kitchen. It says that the a shared housing facility like that may optionally count as one unit or multiple units, depending on the applicant's request. And given that flexibility, my understanding is that the property owner is. Okay with the zoning density either being what it was before three to twenty or now three to six. But what I'm wondering is if it's better for the town if we keep it at three to twenty. And the scenario I'm wondering about is, let's say. Um, the owner builds one of these. Uh, shared housing facilities and let's say it has fifteen. Shared housing units. Would they then almost be required to opt to count that as one unit? So that they stay under the maximum of six. In the mixed use zoning. And then in that scenario for our Reno, would we only get credit for one unit? Whereas if the maximum was twenty, would they be allowed to count all fifteen units as units? And then would we then get credit? In arena for fifteen units instead of one? If that makes sense.
I think that answered the question, but I'm not sure if I have the answer. Um. I I am gonna, I am gonna check with our with our consultant, see if they have any, um, immediate thoughts around that question. Um. We didn't look, I I recall, you know, we had a, uh, a mixed use zone of three to six, which seemed to line up pretty well with what the owner of that site was. Planning to do. And so that seemed to make the most sense, uh, to use that designation. And the the three to to twenty. Is now a bit of a relic because it doesn't actually apply anywhere. So, uh, if we use that, I think we would need to, I guess, reestablish it, um, just for this one. Uh, this one site. But I do hear what you're saying about the town wanting to maximize this opportunity to get credit. Uh, for, you know, for the production of of the supportive housing units. Um, so I I think that's certainly something we can look at. I will check with our consulting team to see if they have any thoughts around this question.
Curtis, do you have any thoughts regarding the question?
I'm not quite sure I'm following. So if you could restate that, it would be helpful.
So. As far as I understand, the possible plan for the site would be to develop a shared housing facility. Where there's like one building that has a number of. Living units in it and a shared kitchen, for example. And in the housing element on page one hundred and seventeen. It stipulates that. As far as I understand, for a shared housing facility like that, it is up to the applicant. If they want to count that as one unit or multiple units. And so my question is, does that choice, will that choice? Influence whether or not those units actually count in our Rena or not? And are they, if we have this three to six, uh, zoning, are they going to be? Forced to count it as one unit so that they stay under the six? Whereas if we had three to twenty, they would be able to count them as multiple units.
Well, for the purpose of Rena and being a house, uh, a unit. For the way HCD looks at it, there needs to be some minimal cooking. Facilities. It doesn't have to be a full kitchen. But there has to be something in there that it could be a hot plate and. A small refrigerator, but if the units don't have any type of facility in it, then it can't. That those individual rooms could not be counted as a unit. So in the case you had five units with one kitchen, then it's one unit. If those individual rooms have some minimal. Facilities in them that have enough to count them as a unit, then they could be individual units. Per HCD. And those rules may differ for, you know, from. Other standards that the federal government may have for supportive housing, but that's how you count. The way HCD looks at units. They have to be self-sustaining units.
Okay, I I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Do they have other questions on those properties? Looks like not.
We're getting Nicholas.
You're getting Nicholas. Okay. So, um, next, uh, we'll be. Gaining public comment on these items, and they've had the benefit of hearing all the questions. Thank you for recommending that, Ronnie. And thank you, Catherine, for figuring out how to do it expeditiously. At least the rain stopped, so we didn't put Nicholas out in the rain.
And, um, just as Nicholas is coming back in the room, I did get a question from the public about whether there are any other, um, recusals that needed to take place, um, due to proximity or otherwise. And it's my understanding that there are none, but I did just want to ask, because I'm new. Um, I did just want to check in with the commissioners and just confirm that that my understanding is correct.
Oh, uh, that just reminded me, I am recused on the Sequoias.
On the Sequoias, okay. So if there's any, if we need to have any discussion of the Sequoias, that would be a situation where then you would need to leave the room. But if there is no, um, discussion of that particular site. Um, then there's no need to leave and you can just participate overall.
And Nicholas and I are recused off of specific discussions on the Stanford wedge, but we have been included when it, the Stanford wedge is just one of the.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. And so same likewise, um, if there, if the other three commissioners want to discuss the Stanford wedge, um, site, then we will have you to, um, leave again. This is fun, isn't it? All right. Thank you.
All right. Okay, then I'm going to move to public comment. Uh, and I see Dave Cardinal with his hand up first, and we're going to do the usual three minutes.
Oh, great. Um, with any luck, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Hey, great. I probably won't take that long, although, you know, it's a thing. Uh, first, thanks for everything. Uh, and most importantly, I'm very supportive of passing the proposed housing element. Um, after two years, um, draft four, we're already suffering, as Curtis told us, from not having passed one. So, you know, I think it's it's great. I think our big challenge is actually going to be building any affordable housing in town. Since we haven't really made any progress in the first year of the eight-year cycle. A doubt we have affordable ADUs built. We haven't approved the Stanford project. Um, Jim White, bless him, is is building his units. Um, but thanks. On a more specific topic. Um, at least in one of the pre-meeting comments, there's still some confusion and perhaps angst about the fire risk maps. Um, I thought Don Bullard was pretty clear about that when he, um, spoke to the WPC. But legally, we need to use CAL FIRE maps. Um. He's got the flame mapper maps. Uh, he's using them internally. Uh, that might be better, in which case we could augment the CAL FIRE maps for them, but. So far, he's been unwilling to actually make them public, although we paid for them. So that would be nice. That might be a good one. Um, also, more importantly, the most current analysis was Zeke Lunder. Who consulted extensively with the Ad Hoc Housing Committee. And basically, they picked sites that were considered currently the safest right now along the main corridors and in low-risk areas. So I. You know, arguing over spilled milk or whatever happened ten years ago or something, I think, is. A waste of time. I think we're building currently the best way we know how or planning to build the best way we know how on the best sites. So, thanks.
Thank you, Dave. And Rita Comas, Thomas, if you were, you're up next.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment or question. Um, and my comment is concerning the Stanford wedge, and so I'll pause and see if something needs to happen.
No, I think you you can talk. It's just they, that's okay.
Okay, uh, the draft, um, housing element on, uh, number four. Uh, on page ninety three of the actual document under section five, where it talks about resources. It says Stanford University owns two sites. It talks about, um, you know, it's proposing the construction of twelve affordable units. It's talking as if it's a done deal. And number four, which is in red, is part of the, I guess, the updated document. It says the project complies with mitigation measures of an applicable environmental document. The, um, the Stanford DEIR that the town put together, uh, was closed for public comment and, um, other comments. On, I believe it was May thirteenth, twenty twenty two, and that document. Updated by the town, um, has not been shared with the residents and the organizations that, uh, sent in the letters. And so I'm. Trying to understand why it is number four. It talks about this proposed, it doesn't talk about the DEIR. And number four, that the project complies. Uh, has there been a resolution on all of the items that people submitted concerning the DEIR? Uh, and so I'm just surprised about the wording that's that's here. Um, and trying to understand if this is in the document. Why is it worded that way as if it's a done deal and saying that the project complies, um, when the project is not approved yet? So, uh, thank you. For listening. And I'm. Hopeful for a response to this one. Thank you.
Next, we have Dale. Bow. You're up. Go ahead. I, you were there for a minute.
Am I still here? Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you.
Uh, great. Thank you. Had to fix the bounce. Um. Linda alluded to it and, uh, other people have commented on it, but my my comment has to do with. The safety element and so on. Uh, first, I want to commend this group and all the others who have been involved in in what's now. Becoming called the seven plus thirteen, uh, work plan with the fire department to improve, uh, safety and fire mitigation in town. I think this. A wonderful step forward. But, uh, along with that comes and it's on your, I believe it's. But along with that comes, and it's on your, I believe it's red page seven, of the notes from staff saying that until a new safety plan is adopted and so on, the safety plan of twenty ten remains in force. And right now, we have a quite a disconnect between the document you've got in front of you tonight and the safety element of twenty ten. The safety element of twenty ten specifically calls out the MORTS map as the map to be used for fire hazard mitigation. And of course, I'm sure you're aware that the, the plan that the housing element uses the old, old CAL FIRE maps. And so I, I suggest that this group needs to send this back to staff and have that those issues resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? I saw hands up along the way, but they seem to have gone down. Kristy Corley, you're up.
Yeah, we were having a hard time hearing Mr. Targ earlier. I could not hear his references. I, I'm hoping that you can type out what he said, so we can then hear, because even if I listen to the tape again, I won't be able to hear it. So, help us out on that. I have a question. If, for example, the base project is twenty-three units, but with bonus density law, what is the maximum units and height that we could get out of twenty-three units? Is it true that bonus density law increases the number of units by thirty-three to fifty percent if it's below market BMR housing? So that's my first question. And I did want to clarify that you said for the Dorothy Ford Park, which is multi-family, multi-use housing, that you would, that state law requires you to build no parking, zero. Did I hear that correct? Okay. I think that the public needs to understand that. And so really, we could get a project without parking. And we, we have one bus that takes kids home from school at three o'clock over to Woodside High School, and we have no other buses. So I just don't see how this is going to work without some more public transit. My other comment is objective design standards, who decides on concessions and variances? And how does the public learn that these variances and concessions have been given? For even setbacks, say for, you know, the Hawthorns is looking at parking and we have a seventy-five foot setback, but could we give them twenty-five? Is that a concession? Is that a variance that we want? And how would the public learn of that? Or would it be done behind the desk? And then I did want to point out that Dorothy Ford Park Open Space was the first donated open space given to the town of Portola Valley. Many donors were from the Open Space Committee and some residents. We do value the Little League field and that it be maintained to be a regulation-sized field. So we do know that the park is in conjunction with the Little League field. So we have six hundred children from San Mateo County using this park. In fact, they use it for their tournaments at the end of the year because it's considered one of their best parks. So I, I really value not having anything happen to that little.
How are we doing timewise, John?
We just arrived at the three minute.
You know.
Last, we can make a couple last points, Kristy.
Okay. I guess that's, I felt interrupted there, but I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, is there anything within those questions that you want to respond to?
We have one more public comment in the schoolhouse.
Oh, well, we have one more public comment. I'm sorry. I, well, the screen went away on that. Where, somebody in the high schoolhouse?
Test first, can you hear me, John?
Ah, yes, there we go. I can see you too.
Bob Turcot, first of all, I want to thank each planning commissioner for the time and effort that you've put into this. The, the serious work that's gone into this is very important for our community and very much appreciated. So thank you all. I, I'm, the hazard map, the fire hazard maps matter. I'm not going to reiterate what people who are interested have seen and heard multiple times before. But, except to emphasize that they do matter. They won't prevent or preclude development, but they will allow development to proceed safely. And where that's most important is where the development is dense. The people that will most benefit from the mitigation measures that the fire district has identified are the occupants of affordable housing. And to pretend that there is not significant fire hazard at these sites is a, is a real mistake. Zeke Lunder himself identified that if he were to do the hazard mapping today, his map would have more red on it than the MRTS map. The MRTS map does not overstate our hazard. There's no question about what is the most accurate. I haven't interacted with HCD, but I have a believing that they would not want the most accurate depiction to be included in the housing element, the depiction that has been in our housing element since twenty-ten. I think they would be supportive of something that would provide a basis for safe development for affordable housing. I also wonder about the question of fraud. I live in an area that Maritz and the Fire District identified as very high fire hazard severity. With this map change, that rating will disappear. I will disclose if I sell the house, but other people won't. What will become of new home buyers who move into Portola Valley, believing what's in the housing element, while there is ample data that shows that that's not accurate. So I'm all for including the most accurate information we have. If it's an issue of work and staff hours, there are people in the community who have a deep knowledge about this and would be thrilled to help craft text, and we'd be happy to step up and do that, even if it's to be used tentatively, something to be presented to the town council for their consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see we did have one more hand come up. Oh, went back, you know, back up again, and it's a phone number ending in three zero five six.
It's, it's Dana, you guys. Dana Breen. I, I am weighing in sort of reluctantly because the public was invited to give comments about all of this, and I felt that I couldn't give a comment until I heard from the planning commission. I mean, I don't understand the sequel implications to all of this, and I think the rest of the town doesn't understand either. You know, you guys tonight are really our representatives, you know, for the general plan, for everything we love about the town. I'm looking to you guys, you know, to help figure this out because I don't understand it. I mean, I, I hear all the ASCC stuff, all the things that really caused me a lot of worry, and I also feel like for years, you know, since the beginning of the Housing Element Committee, we talked about what were the implications to the general plan? And if anything changed, it changed, then other things were going to have to happen. So I'm looking to you guys for your guidance and for your leadership. You know, and, and I think that's really important for the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And unless there's anybody else? I don't think so. In the, I think it's time to end public comment and come back to discussion. Public comment is closed. Let's go back to our commission and pick up some of the items. Who wants to start?
I guess, can I just ask if we wanted to?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, good, good. Sorry. Yes, are there particular questions where I jumped in before? Are there particular questions that the staff would like to answer or that the commission would like to see answered? I know quite a few of them have been asked historically. But is there anything you'd like?
I'd be happy to reply to some of the questions that were raised. I think the fourth caller had some questions, one regarding density bonus law and percentage of units that are granted to density bonus projects. That really depends on the affordability of and percentage of units of affordable units that are part of the project. And so the density bonus they get is based on the amount of affordable units they provide. Likewise, waivers and incentives or concessions are based on the percentage of affordable units. The higher the number of, or higher the percentage of affordable units, the more incentives or concessions you get. Waivers is a little bit different topic, but that really is related to the ability to build the project on the site, so it takes a different standard. Can a project be built without parking was one of the questions? No, is the answer to that, except for maybe supportive housing projects. I think that's what is referred to in our general plan. But other types of projects, multi-family projects, we, as Adrian mentioned, we will have a set of zoning code standards to bring through the commission and have you make a recommendation to the city council that will include parking standards for multi-family for multi-family projects. There was a question about when will the public be made aware of requests for exceptions or variances? That'll be part of the public notification project process. So when a project does come forward that concludes those types of requests or entitlements, we will make the public aware by mailing notices, posting notices on the site and publishing notices in the paper, plus providing notification on our website. I think those were some of the highlights. The questions that came up, you'd like to have addressed?
I, I actually would like to hear an answer at some point about the question about Stanford Wedge. I don't know how you want to manage that.
That was one of my comments to the one that Rita raised, is something you're asking about.
Somewhere in the documents, somewhere in the documents, it talks about the, the status of Stanford Wedge, right? It talked about.
I could reiterate my understanding of the question as well.
I guess I would, I would suggest, since we have two commissioners that are recused on the Stanford Wedge, if we want to have a discussion of that particular site, that, I'm sorry, but.
I choose the rest remaining house.
Okay, that works out. We'll come find you when we're done.
Maybe after that, we could have a restroom break and.
If I, if I could add something, I think Rita was referencing page ninety-three. There's discussion of Stanford University of that project because it includes some affordable units that would fall into the affiliated housing program. And so there's some new red language there, red line language there that just talks about the proposed find, objective findings for the affiliated housing program. So I think maybe Rita misread that.
So I guess specifically, on, on page ninety-three, the, the red bullet point number four says the project complies with mitigation measure, measures of any applicable, applicable environmental document. So what does that mean? Because like the EIR on that project is not completely, like, for example, why doesn't it say the project will comply?
I, I, I would make a friendly amendment. I think number one and number two also presuppose the outcome of a sequel review that we're in the middle of. And that's just absolutely, I don't understand the reason why you've done it here, or you have to word it differently.
Okay, so these are proposed objective findings. They're not findings. We're not making findings here. They're just proposed objective findings for the affiliated housing program.
Right, in, in.
How can you even propose something when you're without biasing and prejudice in a sequel process that you're, who knows what's going to happen to you? You're now eighteen, nineteen months into a draft EIR that got a hundred and fifty-six comments. I just, I think that's.
But, but, but the, the sequel process first requires that a city adopt the environmental review that was conducted. And one of the components of that environmental review is that if it is a mitigated negative declaration or environmental impact report, that there are mitigation measures that the applicant needs to agree to beforehand for the city to move forward towards a potential adoption. And then the city acts on that document first before it moves on and acts on the actual discretionary applications in front of it. So with the adoption of the, the secret document, plus the mitigation monitoring plant program, plus the applicant agreeing to those mitigation measures, that puts the project in line to make the, the fourth finding here, so that the project complies with the mitigation measures. We have the mitigation measures listed. We have the applicant's agreement to the mitigation measures. And we have the adoption of that environmental document along with those mitigation measures before the council take a, a body takes action on the discretionary application.
For this, I'm hearing that these are essentially going to be the requirements that will be applied to any such project. And like this section is not like the, the project there, those bullet points does not refer to, like the Stanford Wedge specifically.
No, it doesn't refer to Stanford Wedge specifically. And the, these are really the the, the the path that demonstrates how the city arrived at a particular decision. These are the findings that support a, this, a city's decision to approve a particular application or entitlement in front of them. Like a variance, there's typically three findings required for a variance. In order to approve that variance, the city has to demonstrate, you know, in support of these three findings, the reasons why the variance was approved. And these objective standard findings are the, the path that demonstrates why the city took action on a application in front of it.
And just sort of follow on that. So Adrian or maybe John, I would have sworn that I read in the document, of, of, of the many hundred pages we got, that there's a timeline that calls out and specifically notes that the EIR is still in process and we're expecting, I, I, I think it said late twenty twenty-three, early twenty twenty-four. So it's acknowledging the fact that, that, you know, it has not finished yet. And I was hoping that that would be good enough in terms of, of, of making sure people knew that nobody was pulling the wool over their eyes or hiding something. Am I, did I read that correctly?
It looks like Curtis may be able to verify that.
Yes, and I just want to reiterate what one of the commissioners just mentioned. These are, this is not for the Stanford Wedge project specifically. We were told by HCD that we need to have objective standards for the affiliated housing program to show it wouldn't be subjective. So that's why those findings are in there, and maybe it confused people with the discussion of this affiliated housing beforehand. But yes, within the discussion of the Stanford Wedge, it does also note that that environmental review is in progress.
Can we stay on page ninety-three for a minute and then we can go to whatever it is that John found, if we can find that? From what I understand what you're saying, then, on the top of ninety-three, where it says Stanford University owns three sites, is also part of the affiliated housing, and they're proposing to do something. Why could we not delete those first two comment, those first two sentences and say, when the town receives an application, it will go through the following four points. Rather than say that you have made findings, say that that is your process and that you will make those findings before you go forward with anything. I think that's what John just told me. That you don't actually act on the document until you have those four things. The way it's written, I read it the same way Rita did. It's like, oh, okay, done deal. So, but I think what you're saying to me, John, is you go through those steps internally before you start a project, and you will do that for any application under the affiliated housing program. Doesn't have to be specific to Stanford. You can take that part out for these purposes. The very simple fix, if I understand what you're saying, which is to take out those first two sentences and then say any project that's, any application that's received under the. application that's received under the affiliated housing program will meet the following four criteria. Not making it sound like you already made a commitment for the Stanford project or for any other project for that.
How about making that a brand new paragraph and inserting what you just said that before an affiliated housing project is approved, it will include the the decision-making body will make the following objective findings.
I think that's a more accurate reflection of what you're telling me what you meant there. To me is much clearer.
Yeah.
Sorry, John, I didn't find what you found, so maybe that's a separate discussion.
Does any? I saw Carla nodding her nodding her head. You know where that is?
Yeah, it's on page 102.
Of the actual housing element.
Right. That's where the discussion of the pipeline and pending projects of the Willa Commons and Stanford Wedge are both mentioned there.
But what's the point? I mean, the it's just reemphasizing that, yes, of course, the Stanford Wedge has not completed its EIR. I think that's your point, John.
Yeah, things were happening, you know. Yeah.
The red line's inaccurate where it over strikes the word draft because I think the I think what we received was a draft. In May of 2020.
Well, it says now and the EIR is close to issuance, right? That's what the new sentence is.
I think that was intended to acknowledge that the final EIR, which of course is the draft EIR plus the responses to comments, the whole package is close to issuance. The final EIR is posted issuance.
Right, which is how I that's that's how I understood it. And that made me feel good that we was acknowledging we're exactly where we were in the process. Are people thinking about it or I was waiting it looks like.
I'm actually thinking about it.
Okay, okay, okay. Can I give you three minutes?
Has to commit to circulating a final EIR if it receives it from the applicant. And I don't think trying to figure out if the town has committed to HCD more than they need to commit for purposes of sequel. Don't think they have. It says that it expects the EIR. You might as well correct it while we're at it because we're already past late 2023. So you might as well correct it to say early 2023. That's part of your red line. It's a delicate bit dance, I know, because you want HCD to think we're going to build these things that don't want to get in the uncomfortable situation of pre-app proving something you haven't gone through the process on. But John, if you are.
Okay, I I think we're good there. Do we have other discussion then that relates to the Stanford Wedge while we've kicked out Nicholas and Anne?
I do not.
Hey, what was the other one we kicked Nicholas out for? Oh, the 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 white properties, right?
The question is, shall we bring Anne back in and see if there's discussion of the white properties?
Yeah, sorry. Yes, that's obviously the right answer. Thank you. I need all the help I can get. Yeah. Somebody's getting in. I'm going to blame COVID for me for getting stuff like that. And so so we're on discussion. We went through the Stanford Wedge that you had to recuse yourself from. And now we're back to the the white properties that Nicholas, of course, tested the outdoors.
Okay.
So so I'm inviting discussion on the white properties.
I I think I think from my side, it's important that we include the recommendation that Jim White sent in his public comment letter to restore those paragraphs that that he had worked out with the previous town attorney. And yeah, so do.
I saw a lot of head nodding there. I said, I saw a lot of head nodding there by all the commissioners that we think that should be there.
I I don't know. Do we need to like wordsmith the where it says mixed use or multi-family and like the number of units or something or I don't know the process for sort of us recommending the change.
Specific specific as of the page.
I'm looking at page 19 of the December 20th editions of the in the public comments. So the last thing that was sent out.
We have that one good chance. Sorry, I'm looking at all your notes here.
That Thomas said the last one that Thomas sent out at like 326. Oh, no, that's the previous version. Sorry. The last one.
So I.
But yeah, I think you're right, Ronnie. It it we I think we already discussed that for one, even multi-family probably has to be mixed use. Yeah. I I I heard that that was okay by staff that they 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 didn't have a huge issue with that. And I think it would show seems we've had a lot of confusion with Jim between all of our turnover and staff changes and feels like, you know, there's been agreements and then and then stuff disappears. So I think putting it back in would be a good would be appropriate on that. And I I'm, I guess I'll follow on that, Ronnie. I guess I'm also thinking that the numbers are agreed upon on this. Catherine, are we good with that? He had some slight changes there and and very clearly we were, it looked to me like we were trying to fix it all in in the housing element, but we may have missed one or two spots and that those will be corrected as. Am I understanding that correctly, Adrian and Catherine?
I just want to make sure we we look at this at the staff level. One issue with changing the word multifamily to mixed use is the bullet point states a density below the range specified in the mixed use says it well, right now it says multifamily. But if the intent was to make it mixed use will be permitted so long as the site accommodates at least. I guess this would be two residential units at the lower income level. I just wanted to flag that our HCD reviewer has not seen this language and we don't actually have much of a buffer left for for the I could for this income category. So if we go below three units, mixed use is three to six units to the acre. So we go below three. We would not actually be generating six units at that site, I guess, is the one thing I did want to just flag. I I invite staff and our consultant team if they have a comments on that, but I did just want to flag that our reviewer could have some concerns.
We go, I mean, even down if the density were three, it's also not generating six units, right? It would be three or four.
Curtis, did you have any thoughts on that that you can wanted to relay to the commission and staff?
Like what Catherine says is correct. If we end up getting less units and for less units on the site, the no net loss comes into play if we review reduce units now. We would need to go back and share that with the reviewer. And again, we're in a pretty tight space with the number of units right now. We've really, I think, made the changes that we can reasonably do and losing more units would put us in a challenging spot.
So can I? So I I hear that, but I think I don't want to confuse, you know, some of the nuances of of the numbers that we're putting in there versus our commitment to the whites. Look, to the whites. I believe the town said, we're going to let you if in order to have you be counted as part of our housing element, we're going to make it possible for you to develop this for supportive housing as you see fit. So as long as we're meeting that goal. I'm not too sure I i- if you find creative ways to put the numbers in there that have it look good to HCD, but clearly let let the whites do what we've said that we're going to allow them to do. I'm okay with that, but I think we have to say we're going to make sure they're allowed to do what we said they're allowed to do.
And the the proposal is not to change the six AMI unit target. So even now with the three to six density range. That permits them to build fewer units than the target. And I believe that the known at last would kick in in that scenario. Even with things as they are currently written in the housing element, right? So I, yeah, it doesn't seem like it's a change from that standpoint.
Yeah, I would. I I think that's a great point and unless you don't have any further concerns, I think we can take that direction and make that point to our reviewer if she has if she has concerns with that bullet point.
And like I said, as you mentioned, Catherine, you want to think about it and talk about it with the consultants. That's fine. I I think we need to make sure whatever we turn in allows the whites to do what we promised we'd allow them to do.
And you're speaking for all of us when you say that, John, to be clear.
Oh, chime in anyway, but um, yeah. I I maybe not. I don't know. What do you think, Anne?
I can see once that that's it. I mean, the the changing the number of units that develop at lower income level is, I I don't see an issue there because again, the under the change in this fourth version of the housing element, all of the units are assumed to be above moderate.
Okay.
Okay, so we could leave it in your hands to to work that out. So.
Okay.
Okay, are we are we finished on that one? If then I think we should.
I'm just reading again. I I I don't. It says says that there will need to be two residential units at the lower income level, but I'm not reading that as changing the minimum density. The minimum density is still three. And so let's say there were two residential units at the lower income level, there would need to be one additional unit at a higher income level, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, this this language is is a relic of our assumption, our previous assumption that this whole site was going to develop at 20 units of low income. Or not, I guess it was, no, sorry, it wasn't 20, it was 13? No. I can't remember, but it was generally going to develop at low income levels. Twenty twenty one, twenty one total was in the prior housing element. And how many of those were low income in the prior version? How many? Only only four. Okay.
Sorry, maybe what I said earlier was it it does say a density that below the range specified in the multi-family designation will be.
But it would make more sense now to change that to mixed use. Because that is the designation that's proposed for this site. But some of the other language, I think it was kind of a relic of assuming that multifamily designation. And 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 the assumption that there were going to be some some lower income units generated. So we will, I I I think we can take the take the direction and and work with this language and just change multifamily to mixed use, change four to two. And.
And multifamily mixed.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Anything else on this property?
If if maybe you have opportunity to speak with the whites again, and maybe if you guys together agree that three is acceptable. We can go with that.
Yeah, I don't think we need to. We need to worry so much about the number of of units that would that would develop at the lower income level because again, we're not assuming any will under our current.
And the and the table reflects six units at the site. Those six units at the moderate above moderate income category. Thank you. So that, you know, saying two versus four, I think would be okay.
Okay.
In section, so long as HCD is okay with that.
All right. Anything else on on that property properties? If not, let's get Nicholas and generalize from there. Oh, we were going to take a restroom break, right? Was that required? Yeah, let's have a.
Yes, yes.
Yes, we will have. We'll have a, let's call it what a 10 minute break. Come back in 915. Excellent. So let's get started again. And we're in discussion. And we've covered separately the Stanford Bridge and the white properties. So now we can have a discussion on the rest of the topics that might come up. And I thought maybe if I could ask Nicholas you to start. And with a synopsis of given that we were, the the mic wasn't really on. People had difficulty hearing. So maybe a little synopsis of what your question was. And then was there some sort of a proposal that you wanted to do with that or or figure it out? So if you would start first, that would be great.
My mic on?
Yes.
I think that at this point, this is probably the right place for me to start. So the issue that I had is in establishing a range of of density and the density that's being proposed. Or initially was, as I understand it, and somebody will correct me, is three to 20 dwelling units per acre. I looked at the it's now been modified to 22, 23 dwelling units per acre. And that's not the kind of highest density. I'm not sure actually why we would have the cap of 23, but that's what we have. And maybe we should talk about that. But the lower end of it being 20 raises some potential issues in my view for the Lederer Church site. As I'm not sure that you can do 20 dwelling units per acre on on that parcel. I'm, of course, not a developer. See a lot of things getting built, so I have some familiarity with housing product type. And I think a a 20 DUA is pretty intense for that little area. I think you could do it now, for example, as was proposed, if you were to dig out a parking area beneath, but that gets to be really expensive. And I don't know. And it's, my thought is I am pretty sure that you could do a somewhat less dense product there more easily, going down to like 15, maybe even 17 DUI. A townhouse product, for example, that seems like it'd be much more realistic. But so that that was my thought. So the then the the suggestion or the observation was made that because we had missed our filing deadline and we were out of compliance, that we had to be at 20 DUI as a matter of law. And I don't know that that's right. I think that there's some flexibility if you demonstrate that Um, I think that there's some flexibility if you demonstrate that. Uh, a different number, a lower number is uh supportable and appropriate. You know, I I don't own this area of law, but, you know, I've seen it before and I've thought about it, I understand why. Twenty is a good number, uh, it goes back to two thousand and four. The Mullen Amendment that says that if you have twenty dwelling units per acre, you're presumptively affordable. So I mean, that that's that's a that's a good number if it works. But if it doesn't work and it precludes actual development, seems like a mistake to me. I don't know that we need to resolve that right now. I think that from my perspective. There's uh perhaps a relationship or an understanding or a directive. That we've received from H C D, I'm not part of those conversations, but I hear that from people who I know and I trust. Uh, so if I'm told that the number is twenty. It doesn't make sense to me, but in a certain sense, it doesn't have to make sense to me right now. What we need to do is have a work, we need to have a document that can get approved. And we can amend it if it doesn't work and go back to H C D, which seems a little silly. On the other hand, missing a deadline or. Creating a ruckus when you are up against a deadline doesn't seem like the good use of time either. So that's a little bit where I I am, I look at it, doesn't make sense, don't like it, think it's. Not not enough said, but I don't think that's something that. Uh, this evening I would myself want to fall on my sword for, or they would recommend that anybody else do either. I think that we've got a little bit of time potentially to talk to H C D, to go back and check the code. Uh, and to evaluate whether or not uh having a. The range that we've identified is the right range, again, I don't know that twenty-three is the right cap. Let me see what why we would limit ourselves to. Twenty-three number, I think we could probably go higher. Uh, on that as well, but I don't think that we need to deal with that really right now.
Can I?
Go ahead, thanks.
I guess when you say that about the twenty, I mean, I. Are you right, it it is in the July twenty-fifth letter from H C D. I'm looking at our red page twenty where they said the minimum density for rezoning. To accommodate the lower income arena must be twenty units per acre. Um, so. I I guess I, I didn't. Didn't know if you saw that, and you saw that and you, I guess, disagree with.
I I am confident that that's what H C D said.
Okay, but I but I guess it wasn't only in like the private discussions with H C D, it was in their public letter.
I I. This is, that's cool, uh, but uh, that 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 does, that doesn't, that doesn't really move me. Uh, I look at it and I think, geez, you know, that's not constant with what I've, with what I uh. With with what I think I know, uh, and with what I did in a five-minute uh legal research. Uh, while we were at the uh at the dais and I didn't want to spend more time on it that and I. From my perspective, I don't need to spend more time on it and we can kind of resolve it if we can before we go to council. And if we can't.
Resolve what? I mean, I I I thought you concluded that you didn't need to deal with it now, now are you going back and saying there's something to resolve?
I think that if you can resolve it easily and we can make a showing, it'd be useful, we don't need to do it now. And if it's going, if it's going to be disruptive. Uh, with H C D or getting ourselves adopted timely, I wouldn't do it, on the other hand. Uh, I'm not sure I would walk away from it if I have an opportunity to fix it, an issue. Uh, that's fixable uh in a short period of time.
And can I ask one more clarifying thing? So. When you reference the Ladera Church site. Are are you are you realizing that it's half an acre? So if we talk about twenty units per acre, it's ten units on the site?
Yeah, okay, I mean, I look at that and I just, and I think that I think it would be, I think it would be hard.
I don't remember which meeting, but I thought we saw preliminary, like, possible site plan at at one point.
Um, again, I think that, and if you, if it's only half an acre, it gets even harder. To have that kind of uh, that kind of density.
Right, you're OK with the twenty units per acre on the Ford Field site, because that's two and a.
I I I have zero problem with that, I think you could probably go with a higher density. Um, for that uh as well, you know, I'm not sure exactly why we would limit ourselves to twenty-three. But let's say, as I have zero problem with density. That may be anathema to some people, but you have, it has to be the right site. And. I think that. I think twenty is hard there, I think twenty-three maybe isn't ambitious enough. For. At the other.
But like our previous submission was three to twenty, right, it was the maximum. So. I guess you were OK, well, you were OK enough to.
I I, yeah, I mean, I can be OK, and I and I know what you can do with the density bonus, and it's going to be a hundred percent. Uh, low or very low, and so you'll be able to boost the number. Uh, so you'll be able to get to something that kind of makes sense, but.
Yeah, and and we did deliberately, you know, um, it's a bit of an artifice, but um. You know, we'd know when they do density bonus, that means they'll be able to adjust the setbacks. Uh, and that's pretty much guarantees. Um, um, you know, where we're going to end up with that over time, but. So so I guess Nicholas um. Our previous sort of discuss. I'm sorry.
As I was saying, I I don't feel like I need to resolve.
Right.
With us tonight. And, you know, I wouldn't really waste any more time on it, I think that there are facts and law to be had. And uh, there are.
Okay.
Understandings that are to be understood and, you know, and we can. And that can happen over a short period of time if it can, and if it can't, then we'll deal with it as a further downstream kind of issue.
Okay, okay, so while while you're talking, is there any other issues you'd like to bring up?
Yes, uh, with respect, and I said minor issue. Uh, it is, um, it goes to. Just a clarification regarding the uh objective design standards. Uh, there's a reference to. A multifamily and the new language pertaining to affiliated housing. And then there is a parenthetical that says among other. You have to say among other products, among other.
Where where are you looking?
Uh, this is again, uh, A four point one.
Yeah.
It's um. Maybe it just says among others, and so it leaves this. Parenthetical in which you can dump all sorts of. Entitlement pathways into objective standards and. Uh, sometimes it's good to have an among others, instead of an indefinite. List, and in others, you kind of want to bracket what you're going to be subjecting. Uh, to an objective standard, so we could, we could remove the uh among others. Or we could modify the among others to say uh among. Other entitlement pathways which require uh objective standards as a matter of law. And that would be fine, it's just that it's a small tweak. On the other hand, when we're dealing with something as important as uh the A S C C. And we're going to flip its wings, uh, as we're being directed to do. Uh, let's make sure that we uh don't. But more than uh we need to.
So do our staff and consultants have any concerns with making that minor modification?
I'm not seeing any concerns. With that change.
Good, okay. Any other objections from our um other members on the commission? Okay.
No, fine.
Okay.
Let me just note that there are a bunch of issues pertaining to. Uh, fire and maps, uh, which I think are real, which I think are germane. And I think that the council is taking appropriate steps, and I think that the relationship that is further being built. Uh, with the uh Woodside Protective Fire District is outstanding, and that we'll see good things coming from that. Uh, as we uh, as we go forward.
Nicholas, is that uh specific language you'd like for us to incorporate?
I would like that language to be incorporated unless you can improve on it, and I'm always happy for people to make things better.
Can you repeat it for me?
No. I I I will, I will give it to you, hold on just a second, we don't need to do this in real time.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Okay, and so with the fire stuff, you know.
Previous one? No, no, so I just wanted to flag the fire that I think is, I think is a real issue. And this is me acknowledging that it's a real issue. Uh, and that I think that we've seen some progress on it on a variety of dimensions, both in terms of actions, specific actions that have been taken. Uh, I think that the uh conditions uh and the post approvals uh actions that were taken are are good, and I think also the relationships. Building that's taking place is going to serve us well going into the future. So I have um. To say that I have no concerns is an overstatement, but I think we're heading in the right direction.
Right, but we don't need to change anything here, the 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 actions that we took previously. That that had asked the town council to act on. Or have done what you intended them to do, so we don't have to do anything else here.
You want to know if I want to ask for more?
Yeah, I'm not going to leave you that open.
I'm going to go and work on uh my uh among others.
Okay.
And some somebody else should take that.
Okay, okay, where, anybody else want to bring stuff up? I think, Linda, you had. Maybe something that you wanted to come back to?
Uh, yeah, I have one statement, if you'll just bear with me, I I attended a meeting with, what's his name, Tom Blachek, one of the earlier planners for the town. And um, classic. Uh, he made a a really fascinating point, and when I reread parts of this document, my, it was like kind of fingernails on a on a blackboard, and his point was. We don't exist alone in this world, and that part of the the value of the town of Portola Valley is that we also are sort of a recreation, a free recreation area for. Huge parts of Santa Clara and San Mateo County. And reading this document, and I'm talking about stuff that's been in the housing element for a while, so this was just a new insight I received. There are numerous places where it talks about, well, the residents like to ride horses and ride bikes and um hike, and quite frankly. We have huge impacts, some of the largest impacts, I think I'll say, in this town are from people out of the town who come to park. Um, I walk up Alpine Road when it's too muddy to go on the trails and. I could call the sheriff on a daily basis for people who are parked on the road to use the trails. Um, I, the bicycles, we all know that that's a, are two main roads, Alpine and and uh. A Portola are are huge bicycle routes, people come from all over the country to bicycle there. And and I really think that in a situation like this, maybe it's too late, I can write the words if people would like to share this with me or share this concern with me, but. Where where the state wants what's called substantial compliance, that's a very subjective standard, it's not like they say six and we need eight, or we say eight and they want six. It's a very subjective standard, and when we write a document like this, it talks about our hikes, our trails. We sound like an exclusive enclave, and and I think the bureaucrats in Sacramento get that impression, people come here to hike, people come here to bike, people come here to. Uh, ride their horses, and I think it's really important for us, what what that, what that fellow was talking about, the founding of the town. To really remember these impacts, and in this document. Uh, maybe you don't want to say it, because maybe it's going to make it harder to cite things, I don't really know. But but those impacts are not discussed in this document, in terms of how people are coming from outside of the town and using this area as recreation. And I just went through and found. Different places where a simple sentence, there's a place where the the number of the 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 mid pen open space is mentioned, well, what's not mentioned is that, that's not ours. Everybody from the both counties are coming to use it, similarly, there's some discussion of of the roads. And no mention of of all the people from outside who use bicycles, so I think. I want to make the point, I was quite taken by that point, I'm newer to town, although I've lived my whole life within a stone's throw of here. And I know I've been coming here my whole life for those reasons as an outsider, and I think. Um. I guess enough lecturing, I have gray hair, so, but I I feel like we've really. Little things like that make it much, much harder to get something like this approved when we, when we are. Are not presenting ourselves in a more more full form for other people who have to make these judgments without the benefit of actually being here, and I think it's something we don't focus on enough either. And seems to agree if you want to add anything to that, so I don't have any specific cha, I do have specific changes I would make. But I really caution us going forward to look carefully at that. Um, but along the same lines, I look carefully at the seismic section. Um, just because it come to my attention recently, there's literally a a fault line right across the street from me, I mean, it's four feet wide, and. In here, there's a statement that says, well, mostly it'll be people feeling shaking, well. Uh, it's huge for for development, there's no houses on that side of the street where I live, so. Uh, again, I think um making judgments in these writings that. Sort of underplay some of the results uh uh and and are general and not really necessary uh. Uh, to me is really disturbing, um, the one thing that I did, so enough said on that, but uh. I think it's important, certainly, we're at my client. Uh, the thing you want to take in whenever you get any kind of approval is is, you know, your happy face, I mean, you want to put in. Everything going for you so that the person who has to make a few considerations when they have subjective. Control over you will feel good about going in your direction. Um, having said that, the one thing that still bothers me is this objective criteria. Uh, stuff, and I um. I had the one comment that I mentioned this morning, which earlier this morning, earlier, A four one. Uh, I don't have it in any other places, I I think um John's comments. Uh, put me at ease, I don't think I need any specific changes to it, but I'm very bothered by um. The. This, the place where I uh thought it seemed to say that the A S C C's will would be decreased. Uh, I think that was the only other. Only other comment, I think John also. Responded to my sequa comment about whether we need at least a sequa notice when we submit this. My misuse of the word notice of determination might have been wrong, but uh. Uh. It seems to me we would need something like that. And then the other question we already discussed, I think, I think my position was pretty clear where it talked about the uh. Exemption, that was a wording problem, I I think, and we discussed that with Curtis, and I think we resolved that. Just in the question and answer, so those are my only concerns.
Okay. How about Anne? We haven't heard much from you tonight, you've been quiet.
Yeah, I know real, nothing really on the discussion, um, I guess I'll have comments later when we summarize.
Okay. Ronnie?
Um. I don't know what. I guess my.
I didn't know if you did have other issues, sorry, it was, I was, it was, I was coming back around to say.
I think I'm similar to Anne, I don't know, I was just going to say my comment now, uh, I I don't have further changes to suggest, but. Um, you know, when we got the letter back in July from H C D, it seemed. it seemed like we were going to have to make a whole bunch of changes and it's going to be pretty disruptive. But I think what we've arrived at is very mi- minimal changes, very palatable. And I just wanted to thank staff, current staff and previous staff for establishing that productive, uh, back and forth with HCD. And, you know, getting to this point where I think it's, um, a very, uh, palatable, uh, change.
Yeah, I agree with that too. I've gotten worried about the, um, comments. You just never know. And the reviewer was new. And, um, I was pleasantly surprised with, when I read this all together. Feels consistent with a lot of what the Housing Element Committee did and the work we've done up to now. So no, huge monkey wrench.
I, I know from my perspective, um, not a whole lot to add. With some of the, what I think of as relatively minor changes that we've suggested to, um, the staff that don't, that my understanding is it won't be really an issue. There may be a little thinking, uh, on it, but they feel that they can work that out. That, that we should be moving forward with this with a, a relatively clean kind of, um, support res- of the resolution, um, on that. Is that, I'm sort of hearing that's kind of where everybody is, um, at the moment is yes. Well, then maybe I could like ask for a motion. It's in support of the, uh, the resolution. The wording on it right, though, that, um, yeah, planning convention resolution that was provided to us as part of our package.
Mr. Chairman, if, if it's a help to the commission, I've got a list of the changes that I've.
Perfect. Awesome. Awesome. I was assuming you had those without that, but repeating them back would be, for clarity, would be terrific.
I, I think any motion to adopt the resolution and make the recommendations the council would include this list of changes. So starting at page sixty-two, um, a change of that language reflecting this is a sequa section. Add language that, that the town has not always complied with these rules and processes, but will now do so. So that would be included. And then at page seventy-nine, add language that reflects the town council's last action with respect to wildfire hazard efforts. Page ninety-three, that would require the starting of a new paragraph. This is for the, uh, affiliated housing site objective findings. Um, and start that new paragraph off with something along the lines of approval. Approval of affiliated housing project requires that the following findings be made. So that would be a new paragraph and kind of separate that appearance of connection to the Stanford, uh, wedge project out. For page one zero two, it's deletion of the mid two, twenty twenty-three sections. And this will be happening most likely in twenty twenty-four. I think with six days left, we're not going to make it.
Can you repeat that in this?
It, it, page one oh two, there were some dates in there for accomplishing, I think, one of the programs or one of the, one of the items.
Fair. It said that the Stanford EIR was expected in late twenty twenty-three.
And we would delete.
Two thousand and four. My comment was, we're, we're already done with late twenty twenty-three.
Yes, we're, we're, so we're going to scratch twenty twenty-three. And then I have restoring the paragraphs related to Mr. White's property with some modifications. The, uh, the change would be from the, uh, multiple, multi-family to mixed use and retention of the change from two, from four to two or the number of, uh, low income units. Um, and then we have on page third, one, three, one, three, zero program, one dash, one C, uh, deletion of among others. And, and we have language to insert that reads, among other entitlement pathways under which objective design standards are required by law. So that would be the, the, the change right there. Thank you.
I can't hear anything.
Snap. Uh, uh, or, or we can simply delete the parenthetical that says, among others, which is, frankly, my objection. Either we need to define it or take it out.
Staff have a preference?
I'm comfortable with the language this, uh, Commissioner Targus provided. His replacement.
I agree. I think that might be better than just striking it. I, I think, um, there may be some residual benefit of just, um, acknowledging, uh, that this, uh, is including, but not one, but it, it, as required by law, I think that's a helpful, um, uh, clarification in the language that, um, that the interim plan director just excited.
What else, what else do you have, John?
And that's, that's in the list unless anyone has the other. Adjustments that were, that I missed.
I'd like to just reference, uh, back to Commissioner Brothers' identification that Portola Valley, uh, serves more than the residents of Portola Valley. And that we are, and it was just this way going through to find it, we're identified as a priority conservation area for the region. There are areas which are defined as priority development areas. And those are transportation-rich development nodes where you really want to add densities. And then there are other areas where you really don't want to do that. It wouldn't make sense to build San Jose, uh, in Portola Valley. And, you know, conversely, you wouldn't want to try and build Portola Valley in San Jose or San Francisco. And I think that it'd be reasonable to remind folks and use, use language that has already been adopted to describe this area and to describe what a conservation, priority conservation area is. And to find an appropriate place to at least reference that, to put a marker down. And the virtue of that is, it's, it's already the state's language. It's already the region's language, which has been adopted. So if.
Let me ask, so, so back to, back to staff on that. So is that too big a change to be requesting? Or is it like a minor entry somewhere? Or is it, my, 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 not that I disagree, I totally agree. I'm back to the, let's get, get something turned in. And I don't want to muddy that up with trying to change, add things in, um, even if I think they're good things. If we're close to getting the, the people signed off, which seems to be that I, I kind of want to just get it through.
It doesn't, it doesn't change the world. It does, as I say, it's oratory language. Uh, it's, it, there's no action that follows it, but it is a way of couching it. And I think it's a way of calling out, I think, was a really valid point that Commissioner Brothers made, you know. And if she would have made it earlier, uh, we might have been able to weave it through more effectively. But, uh, uh, in the absence of that, uh, it is a good point. And it seems like it might be a neat way of dealing with it. On the other hand, if it's disruptive.
My, my main concern is whether or not HCD would find it disruptive. At, at this stage in the game, I'm, I, I don't want to insert something in there that they think is going to somehow be a workaround, some of their state laws and policies. And, and I agree.
A mountain lion, you like a mountain lion preserve? A mountain lion preserve, right?
I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna go there, but.
Sorry.
I do worry about that too, that at this late date, it sounds like a reason why we should not have to do our part on housing. I, I worry it could be interpreted that way. So I, I kind of don't want to upset the apple cart.
I, I thought a lot about it before even saying anything, and I agree with Ann. I really don't want to make changes now. I did find five or six places where I could easily change the sentence. And I'm not going to recommend that. But I do feel strongly about it. And any other documents that I see, you're going to hear this. And, um, we've got, uh, you know, some of our, our, our brain trust here who've been working on this and Adrian and other people. And, um, I just think it's a whole attitude thing that's not coming across in the documents we write. But I think it's part of our ethos and ethic as a town. So I, I don't intend to make any, suggest any changes on that for now. But, um, I couldn't pass up the chance to say something because it's rife in this document. And this document, like I said, it's a, uh, substantial compliance. I mean, I, I, I felt the same way other people did, that when we got that letter in July, that was a lot of nitpicking. And so I don't want to say anything more. And I do agree, the staff's done an amazing job, so.
But so, so with the, the, uh, the, 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 uh, the list that John read off, uh, incorporated, is anybody ready to make a motion?
Can I just make sure that those also included the changes on forty-three ninety-four that you read off, isn't right?
Yes, to the Mr. White's property.
I did have a question before actually moving adoption. In the third whereas, you mentioned the arena numbers. And this was Ann's initial question tonight. Are those numbers still correct? In the, uh, uh, first page, whereas, no, oh, excuse me, whereas number four, the town's arena allocation. I've looked at that chart and I couldn't figure out with the red lines whether those are still all correct.
You mean the breakdown, I guess, the seventy-three, forty-two?
Yeah, yeah, seventy-three and the forty-two and the thirty-nine.
I assume our consultants are madly checking.
I had one other word change, which is a sequel lawyer, uh, micromanaging. On page five, in the middle, the last whereas, before conforming general plan amendments, I, I would add the word because, uh, so I would have it read, none of the minor modifications require subsequent or supplemental environmental analysis under sequa, so forth and so on. And then there's a period, but instead I would strike the period, add the word because, and make none not a capital letter because none of the triggers have occurred. In other words, you're telling us why nothing is required. And here, the reader has to figure that out themselves. It's like Trump's lawyers.
So.
So I, uh, after one, five, one, six, two, comma, because none of the following triggers have occurred. It's what you meant to say, I think.
Uh, back to the numbers, the, I mean, there's the two fifty-three and then the breakdown of those. The seventy-three, forty-two, those seem to be the, um, target arena, not, not the ones that, not, not, not including our buffer, which are the, the ones with the buffer are the ones that are changing. So I don't think those.
That's correct.
Seventy-three, forty-two.
Thank you for checking.
Okay, so we're good, we're good on that one then?
Yep.
And then, uh, I guess Catherine and John, the second, uh, proposal from Linda, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, now with those last couple of, so that, no, you have to do, actually do a motion, so.
Would you like a motion to, um, adopt the planning commission resolution provided by staffs with those changes? With that one change?
Well, I think you suggested two changes and it was subject to the list that, uh, the changes that John was proposing.
Yes.
I, I don't, is that a fright bit, sorry, but I guess that was a friendly amendment or maybe, maybe just say it.
We need a motion just to adopt this resolution with the changes we've reviewed.
Yes.
Yes, I make that motion.
And I would second it.
Well, let's have a roll call vote then.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution, subject to one change in the resolution and subject to the modifications to the fourth version of the housing element relayed by staff. Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Krasinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Kopsl?
Yes.
Chair Golden?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tard?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you all.
Okay. Now we've got just a couple of things left, right? We have, uh, commission reports. Do we have any commission reports? I see nothing going on over there. Do we have any staff reports that we need to cover?
We'd just like to thank the commission for all your hard work this evening. And we're getting ready to go into the holidays. City Hall will be, or Town Hall will be closed, uh, next week in observance of the holidays. And we'd like to welcome, I wish you all a very happy holiday season, safe and happy holiday.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work getting this.
Yeah, really.
I agree. I agree. Wonderful. Okay, then we've got minutes from November first, twenty twenty-three.
Um, I have some changes and, um, they're, they're sort of extensive. So I talked to Thomas before this meeting and he said he might prefer that I just put them into a document for him. And they are probably, there's one, two, three, four. They relate to the fact that our code section, when we talk about undergrounding a line or not undergrounding the line, uses the word practicable, which has a C A B L E on the end, and it's a different word from practical. And the staff and I were having a hard time because they didn't understand the difference. And it makes a huge difference. The practicable is a huge word, um, under legal regulations. And so all of the changes relate to that. Rather than take your time, I just thought I'd send a markup to Thomas. And, uh, they all relate to things I said or didn't say. So I, I'll, I'll make those, uh, changes, uh, to the minutes. And I didn't have any changes with anything else for anybody else.
Anybody else have changes to the minutes?
Yeah, I did. And on our red page, uh, one thirty-six, second paragraph, first line, acting chair Targ, I explained that the resolution involving trees is a mute issue. And it is a moot issue. On page, uh, yeah, exactly. It's like, do they have, it's like, if it falls in the forest, will, will they hear it? I, I don't know. There is on, that's on one thirty-six as well. There's a term where it says policy of guidance, and it should be war. And I'll go and tell you what. In just a second.
Like the fourth paragraph?
Yeah, fourth paragraph, acting chair Targ stated there's an opportunity to create additional policy of guidance. That's more guidance. And also on, uh, one thirty-six, says down at the bottom where I was under paragraph four, second paragraph, acting chair Targ suggests that he provide a little information about his background. And that seems not right. His acting chair Targ suggested that, uh, Mr. Biggs provide a little background. And that's what I got.
Anyone else? So any suggestions? I think I have to get public comment also. All right, I'm not seeing anybody else on the, on the panel talking. And of course I wasn't there. So I will open it up for public comment on the minutes, if anybody would like to comment on them. And I see. I do not see anybody putting their hand up. And I guess, is there anybody in the, in the, the house there?
Nobody's here.
Nobody's here, okay. All right then, I will close the public comment. And, um, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
I guess we, do we have to do a roll call, or can we just?
No, you can just, all the, ask for all those in favor, say aye.
All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Nope, okay.
I'm there, but I don't have to.
Motion passes.
All abstaining, even though I don't have to, but I wasn't there.
Oh, okay. Motion passes then, we're good. I guess it's time to end the meeting. Is everybody uh, ready for the holidays? Got your Christmas shopping in? Well, I, I would add my thanks to the staff on getting this through, uh, hopefully through this. Yeah, I guess I make it, we're done, and it's like, well, maybe not quite yet, but okay. Um, but we'll see what, let's, let's take it forward, okay? That's um, do I have a motion for adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, any abstentions? No. No objection.
Done, thank you very much for uh, for, for sticking through it, and if you feel better really soon.
Well, thank you very much. Hey, I'm actually in pretty good shape. I, I just really didn't want to infect anybody.
Thank you for that.
All right, all right, take care everyone, bye.